Please call the roll to determine whether there is a quorum.
Trustee Powell.
Here.
Trustee Jesus.
Here.
Trustee Allen.
Here.
Trustee Settey.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Also present Village clerk Haley, Village manager Francis, and village attorney Molina.
So the next order of business given that we have a quorum is for there to be a motion from one of the trustees to appoint one of you to be president pro temp to chair this meeting of the village board.
I'll make a motion to appoint trustee Valerie as president pro temp.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now you see what he's saying below.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Jesus.
Aye.
Trustee Settey.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
We now have a chair for the meetings. President pro temp Valerie can take over.
Let's start by saying the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment tonight before we get started?
Just in time.
Great timing.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Summers. I live at 387 Shenstone Road. I'd like to start by thanking all of you for your service to the community. I read the minutes, I believe, from the last meeting, and I saw that pink garbage carts were discussed, asking if Flood Brothers would supply pink garbage carts. When this was initially discussed two years ago, when Flood Brothers was trying to get the contract, they made the offer that if anybody wanted a pink garbage cart, they would make a $5 donation to cancer research. There was some discussion among the board, and then trustee Sussman said that she felt that it would be too jarring to have pink carts at the curb, and what if other people requested a different color for a different cause? Some of the trustees said, wouldn't it be wonderful to have a rainbow of color on the street? So when the village board chose not to have pink garbage carts, I took matters into my own hands, and I plastered my garbage can with pink ribbons because I am a recent breast cancer survivor. So I would just like, if you are considering this again, and if Flood Brothers is willing and able to offer pink carts or any other cart for any other cause, I would love to see that happen here in Riverside. And like I said, I love the idea of driving down the street and seeing a rainbow of color in support of people's different causes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. We'll be bringing that up under our managers' report.
Thank you.
Report of the village officers. In Ben's absence, he asked me to make just a couple of brief thank yous. Couple of weeks ago, we had our final car show. We had almost 300 vintage and specialty cars brought to Riverside for our annual car show. I just want to thank Rick and Larry at Riverside Garage for putting it all together, and Public Works and staff for all their logistics. And last weekend was our third annual hop stop at the train station where 18 local microbreweries shared their wares with us to almost 500 guests. Thank you to the Olmstead Society for that, and Peter at Riverside Foods. For those that were there, it was a wonderful time. So thank you all for all the hard work.
For my managers' report, I do have one update, as was mentioned, with regard to the green, or the green, the pink carts. So I did speak with Flood Brothers, and they said they have pink recycling carts available to residents, and how they would administer that would be a $3 monthly rental fee for the carts. They don't offer the purchase of them anymore, and so as part of the revenue that's derived from the cart rental, they would then make a donation to American Cancer Society. So Flood Brothers did say that they would make those carts available to the village of Riverside. It is the recycling cart. Some residents still have the old, the green recycling carts that the village had purchased previously. A lot of residents have switched those out with now Flood Brothers' green recycling carts. They do, they will make them available to residents. As I said, it's a $3 fee. There would be no amendment needed with regard to our current contract as it stands, and so that is my update to the village board with regard to that, so, yes.
Does the $3 each month go to breast cancer?
Not the full amount, obviously.
How much?
A portion of it. He had said that they haven't done the calculation yet, but a portion of it would go to the American Cancer Society, which they've done with other communities.
What are they doing in other communities? How much are they donating in the other communities?
I didn't get into detail with regard to what the total amount that they have provided. This is just an additional service that they've afforded to their different contracts.
And I know Flood Brothers is very generous. I was actually listening to NPR today, catching the end of a story about how the library system became part of the United States, and it was interesting that, you know, the government didn't do that. It was done by, I think it was Andrew Carnegie, who put together most of them in the early, he did like 50% of the libraries. And there's this lady that was trying to put libraries in foreign countries, and Flood Brothers was listed as one of their benefactors. So I know that Flood Brothers is very much into a lot of different causes, so. I think all we need is a consensus whether we would feel that this is necessary to go ahead with, right? Is that what you need from us?
And I don't know if it's appropriate under the managers' report, or should we brought back up under considerations, just so I can get a consensus and direction for village staff?
Okay, so we'll take that up under considerations. The consent agenda, we have several, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bailey, could I ask a question? And this is for both of you, probably, Village manager Francis. I'm asked quite frequently recently about, there's been a lot of talk in the village about gaming, about parks and, or picnicking and fishing, and there's always some conspiracy theories out there on why we're not talking about things, or when we're talking about things. Could you maybe help educate the public on when we'll be talking about those things, and kind of why the timing is such?
Sure. Usually we'll, it's part of staff gathering the information that's requested by the village board. Also, if it was a commission meeting, the timing of the commission meeting, then having some sort of draft minutes from that meeting. So it's more of a staff allocation of being able to get all that information ready for the village board. So we will make sure, because we understand that obviously those are very important items within the community. We'll do a special separate e-flash with regard to each of those two particular topics so that residents are aware, because some residents don't look necessarily, we send an e-flash with regard to the agendas, but sometimes residents don't have an opportunity to look at the agendas to see the items that are listed. So we'll make sure we have two separate e-flashes with regard to those items.
And my understanding, when we discuss the gaming, the first time we will be discussing it, we'll be trying to just kind of craft a resolution and get a feeling for the board, and then the next meeting we'll actually vote on the resolution. So it'll be, it'll be, it'll be spoken in front of this board twice.
Thank you.
Approval of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is the approval of the voucher list of bills dated October 5, 2017. File and review the village board of trustees' regular meeting minutes September 21, 2017. File and review Economic Development Commission regular meeting minutes July 13, 2017. File and review Historical Commission regular meeting minutes July 17, 2017. A resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personable property owned by the village of Riverside. A resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Riverside and the Riverside School District 96 that provides for reciprocal reporting. And a resolution of the village of Riverside, Illinois to authorize the village manager to accept the proposal to provide professional audit services for the fiscal years ending December 31, 2017 through December 31, 2021. Is there any of these items that any of the trustees would like removed from the consent agenda? And if not, can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Ms. Haley.
Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Trustee Jesus.
Aye.
Trustee Settey.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
I don't get to vote anymore. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, you do vote because you remain a trustee. Vote.
Aye.
Reports of-
You said that.
Reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaison. Do we have any reports? Ordinance is resolution, A, a resolution authorizing the execution of supplemental work agreement with Deegan and Associates LLC for $16,410 in additional costs related to the oversight and construction managed services for the abatement, demolition, and soil remediation for the 2710 South Harlem Avenue for a new adjusted contract cost of not to exceed $62,410. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion approved. Second. And we have Sonia here, if anyone has any questions for her. Haley.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Jesus.
Aye.
Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Trustee Settey.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
B, an ordinance amending the village code of the village of Riverside, Illinois relative to the terms and appointments of boards, commissions, and committee chair persons. May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any, Jessica, does anyone have any questions for Jessica?
Just a brief overview of this particular item. The board has made modifications over the past several years to the various commission sections of the code. As during a recent appointment of the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was noted that the current language within the code, that there was a discrepancy of what our practice was versus what the language within the code had. The new language is consistent with the practice of the village and the village board of reappointing chairs for one-year terms and having annual reappointments versus the language in the planning, for the planning and zoning chair, which seemed to lead under having the term as chairperson for the full term within the individual for that commission. So the new language is included with regard to the appointments, not only for planning and zoning, but this is across all commissions and committees. And if the board has any other additional questions on this one?
Haley.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Jesus.
Aye.
Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Trustee Settey.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Considerations, if there is no objection, I would like to bring up the pink garbage cans as the first item I consideration, just so, because I believe the discussion of the budget will be a little bit longer, so we can put that out of the way, so Ms. Summers can go on. Any discussion, any feeling, one way or the other?
I have a question. Is the option for a sticker and a $5 donation still available for residents?
I did not discuss that with Michael Flood. I know that initially when we engaged the contract, that's how we handled it, because they, they had seen that the board didn't necessarily, they wanted another option, and I don't know if they include that as part of their options currently to new customers as part of their request for proposals.
I'd like to know if that's still available, and also what of a resident, if we do this, residents need to know what, what part of that $3 a month is going toward to Flood and what part's going as a donation.
Okay. I have a question. What, if you do rent this pink cart, what happens to your old cart? I mean, is that something that they come and give away again?
If it is a, if it's the one that the village purchased, it's yours.
Yours, okay.
So it can stay with the home, you can continue to utilize it. I asked Michael Flood whether or not there would be an additional charge if a person puts out, and he said no. He said they can continue to utilize it. He said the bulk of them have been switched out now with Flood Brothers' recycling cans. The fee with regard to, so they're charging the same amount of the fee for the rental as they do for the regular bins, so there's no difference. Just for a point of clarification, I believe people pay $3 now for a rental fee for the recycling bins, and so that would be consistent with, for the pink ones, it would just be a portion of that, that revenue stream would go to a donation, so.
So there would be no additional cost to the resident?
Yes.
If they switch out?
Unless you already, unless you had one that was a village piece or that you previously owned.
Right, and that, that would be an additional cost, correct. But if, and so for, in your instance, it would be an additional $3 per month, but you could have utilization of both cans if needed.
But then otherwise, if it's, if it is Flood Brothers already, they would switch it out? That's typically, it's not like they're renting two of them.
Correct.
To people.
Correct.
So.
So before, when we discussed this, I believe the Flood Brothers, that we were going to pay $5, and then the money was going to go directly to the cancer research. I'm making the assumption that if it's an even swap of rentals, that the donation would be still at least $5.
Well, that's what's confusing.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it just doesn't seem like we're paying anything for, we're not making a donation. The resident is not making a donation this time.
Right, the program before was simply when they were going to deliver the carts.
Right.
So everybody was getting a new cart, and you could ask for a pink one, and Flood would donate $5. There's no cost to residents. Obviously, residents-
The cart rental, there's always been a cost to residents.
Well, I know, but, but that's-
No additional cost.
No additional cost to me. So are they just saying they'll switch out and give someone the pink cart to make a $5 donation?
You want me to see if they're willing to just do that instead?
I'm confused as to what they're offering.
Well, right now, they're offering, so if you have an existing recycling cart, and it's green, and you want a pink one, they're willing to swap it out, and they would still make a donation, and it would be based on how much, based on the income that they're receiving.
Out of $3 a month.
Correct.
Right, so they're going to give you, they're going to give a percentage of $3 per month to cancer research, which is great.
I mean, the assumption is they're- It does seem confusing. It shouldn't be, shouldn't be quite this confusing, but the assumption would be they at least give the $5.
I would presume so. I mean, obviously, it's depending upon enrollment. I can ask him. Obviously, there, how they've done this program previously versus what it's come into has changed. And so he said it's basically based on a percentage of the revenue that's derived. So I can find out what that formula will be.
So do you want to try to, try to get interest from the residents, so we know how many people will be interested in doing this?
Well, if I find out what the formula is, I can give a vague idea as to, I can say 10% or 20% of your $3 will be going to American Cancer Society.
This is also for the residents to make a statement, though.
Right, right.
So if they're not being charged anything else on top of what they're doing, whatever is being donated is, is a good thing, right? It's coming out of Flood Brothers.
And it is bringing, it is bringing awareness to a situation.
Correct, yeah.
So I'm all for pink garbage cans, and I'll be the first one to sign up, applying. What do we need to do as a board to move this forward? Get a consensus here?
As far as I'm concerned, because there's no change within the contract as it's currently outlined.
But the actual, there would be no change in the contract, and the actual change in status quo would be between the resident and Flood Brothers. The only, the involvement of the village is to make sure that a majority of the board isn't against having the colors in the village, I guess, is the real thing, because that, I think, that was, that's- That was a good assumption. The village has an interest in what cans are used and regularizing those. And previously, there was an objection, so now if the consensus that would require a vote, or there could be one, would be that there's no objection by the board to the residents deciding as they wish, well, each contract by county, or each house by house, whether they want to be part of it or not. So do we have, I'm looking for a consensus here.
Yeah, I have no objection.
So it looks like we have a pink consensus. All right, so then Jessica's got a direction. She can work to get the message out to the residents that they have an option available if they want to use it. That's great. Mary, thank you very much for being so patient.
Thank you.
Baby steps, two years. Baby steps.
Thanks for bringing it up. Appreciate it.
And then the second under consideration is a continual discussion of our 2018 budget.
Tonight, I've provided you a proposed 2018 budget. Staff started this budget process with the board in August with the presentation of the 10-year capital improvement plan, and continued in September with the five-year financial forecast. This plan has been refined through input from the board and department heads. The village revenues are projected at $18,68,960, with the expenditures being $21,524,024. I'm happy to present to you a budget with a balanced budget in the unassigned fund balance of the general funds before transfers. Special items to note in this budget are that we saw another large increase in police pension obligation of approximately $120,000, which represents 10%. And we do not plan on spending down any of the surplus funds currently held at Irma, which are approximately $359,000. The department heads are all here tonight. If you have any specific questions on any areas.
You know, I just had one, and just for clarity, in case anyone has any questions, because I look at the, at the end and see some of the increases, and, you know, the historical commission, you see a large increase in their budget, but if you look down at the bottom, that actually comes out of money that is set aside for the historical mission that they have through a grant that's been there for some time, or a donation?
No, no, it's through monies that they've funded on their own, through book sales, calendar sales, and ornament sales. So it's funds that they've accrued over many, many years. But it is under a fund balance assignment, that's correct.
Were you looking for consensus on your memo about the vehicles, or do we need to talk about that?
Yes. So my recommendation to the village board with regard to vehicles, as you'll note, Director Johns drafted a budget inclusive of two police vehicles, and then also keeping the ambulance in there. Based on a, an additional or supplemental assessment of the ambulance, and taking a look at the chassis, and other items that have been brought to our attention since the August meeting with regard to the ambulance, I am recommending that we replace that vehicle just based on what, not only additional repair costs that we're looking at in 2018, but then also some significant repairs and maintenance that could be encountered as well in 2018 and late 2017. I am requesting that the board allow and actually authorize the roll-down of the lieutenant's vehicle within the police department into the fire department. We would then get rid of the deputy chief's vehicle, utilize the, the police vehicle then for the deputy chief. We wouldn't be purchasing any new fire vehicles, other than the ambulance. We would be purchasing two new police vehicles, and that would be part of that roll-down from that vehicle within the police department into the fire department. We'd be purchasing those two new vehicles out of the police department from the supervision funds, which is not part of the unassigned fund balance. Those are a separate assignment under the capital projects fund. So there wouldn't be any additional cost under that. That's money that's been collected over many, many years through supervision fees and citations by the police department that goes through Cook County and then is remitted to the village. But then we'd also be extending the life of one of the police vehicles longer than it would have if it would have stayed under the police department by rotating it into the fire department. And I also request that the board allow us to do this rotation immediately. I've talked, I've spoken with Chief Weitzel about rotating the lieutenant vehicle. He is able to adjust some vehicles based on where the staffing levels are for the next couple of months, so that the village will not incur any additional repair costs on the deputy chief's vehicle, so that we can get the trade, basically trade it or sell it, whichever one obviously derives the larger amount, because it has some significant repairs that are coming due, and I prefer not to invest a significant dollar amount in that vehicle, rather put it into, to new vehicles.
I think you're getting a lot of notes.
Okay, okay. So then, then the direction of staff is, I don't know what the bid is right now for the two police vehicles. I don't know if we have, if the 2018 is available yet, but we'll start the rotation for the one lieutenant vehicle into the fire department, so that we can eliminate that 2009 vehicle. And so we may preemptively bring the two police vehicles in 2017 with the hopes that we get delivery pretty early in 2018, so that they're not without, they're not short of vehicle for an extended period of time.
A couple of the questions. We have this distributed antenna system on here at 78,000. This is the antenna that we've been talking about at RV, correct?
Correct. So Chief Weitzel has already resubmitted for the grant. I have been in discussion with various other community partners. Obviously, the expectation is that dollar amount would significantly decrease by partnering with potentially other communities, and that would be in the form of an IGA to come back to the board at a later time. But we had to budget the full amount with the expectation that obviously we would be getting revenue to offset that cost. But that would come to the board at a later date. But obviously, that's of great importance, both to this board and to the village as a whole, so we wanted to make sure we included it.
Okay, so we will get another bite of that apple. And one question, the village hall, talk pointing. Director Bailey, did we reach out to the township to see if they wanted to co-op with us on that job?
I haven't yet. I fully intend to. I've mentioned to the architectural firm that that is the plan, that we will approach the township to try to consolidate the projects. Just something, I've kind of put that project aside until this fall, you know, fall, winter, the more focused on it, but that's certainly my intent.
And then, this is the new one, just, just so everyone has it. It said, under the ambulance, it says, replace the existing 2003. It's actually the 2010.
That's correct, yes.
Some, just some interesting stats on the ambulance. Matt, could you share with us some of the usage, the mileage, or the time that's out, the fees we've collected over the last years, and stuff like that?
Yes, so I reviewed some of the calls for the past four years, and so far in 2017- Yes, so I reviewed some of the calls for the past four years and so far in 2017, the fire departments responded 1,112 times. Out of those times, 668 were EMS calls, but the ambulance also responds on all fire calls within town also. So that number is closer to about a 90 to 95% response out of that 1,112. Going back to last, the previous year's 2016, we responded to 1,763 calls, 1,042 of those were strictly EMS. 2015 was 1,706 and 911 of those were strictly EMS. And in 2014, it was 1,828 calls and 879 were EMS. So about 60% of our calls are strictly EMS calls, but the ambulance does respond on about 90% of our calls within town. Some of the other numbers that I was asked to provide was for ambulance billing, what we recover. Over the last eight years, we've recovered 1.5 million in ambulance fees. We just recently switched to a new collection agency. I think we're going to have a lot better luck collecting with this new company. The previous one was based out of Texas. This new company that we're using is based out of Schiller Park, so it's close by. They're a lot more familiar with how Illinois law works with Medicaid and Medicare and they're a little more aggressive going after some of the fees. So I think that number for ambulance collections is going to go up significantly in the next few years. We are also looking at reviewing our ambulance collection fees. We haven't raised our fees in several years. We are doing a survey currently of the neighboring communities to see what their collection rates are at and ours are about in the middle, so we do have some room to raise ours a little bit. And that will be presented to the board in the near future, which I believe we have a meeting next week regarding it to discuss what direction we're going to look to go.
Any more discussion on the budget?
On the budget, I think it's another opportunity to let the residents know too. When you get your tax bill, only 15% of your tax bill comes to the village, 85% goes to other taxing bodies, mostly the school district. So, you know, please keep that in mind when you get your tax bills. We do a lot without that much, given that we're, you know, 15% of that and certainly providing some very essential services to the community, so.
I think it's also very interesting and please correctly if I'm wrong, 60, almost 60% of our revenue is driven through property taxes.
I believe that to be accurate and I don't have that statistic in front of me though.
And, I mean, our, the CPI, the much, the amount that we're able to increase our taxes does not keep up with our current, basically with our current contracts.
Correct. For next year, the CPI is 2.1%, where a lot of our union contracts and other things go up 2.5 as well as the cost of services are going up more than that.
Thank you. Do we have any new business? We don't have a need for executive session tonight? So can I have a motion in a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Trustee Lisa.
Aye.
Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Trustee Savvy.
Aye.
Thank you.